The call to order, April 18th, 2020 meeting of the Gary Common Council. As is our custom, we will begin with prayer by Ms. Tammy Davis. I call her Deaconess. She's a member of Christ Baptist Church in Gary's first district, as well as a longtime compliance officer in the city of Gary. So we'll have our prayer by Ms. Tammy Davis.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Good when maybe all bow our heads. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this opportunity to once again fellowship together to worship you in our leadership role. You have anointed and appointed each of us to do your will, and we ask, oh God, that we follow your word and that all the decisions, the thoughts, the comments will be done in decent and in order. Heavenly Father, you know that we are all working together for your good and that our work is your work. And that as we live and breathe, it is our will to give you all the glory, all the praise and all the honor for the things that you have done, the things that you are doing and the things that you are going to do. For we know that there is nothing too hard for you. Heavenly Father, we know that you have blessed us with the opportunity to still lead your people by utilizing technology to ensure that the business of this city is still being taken care of. So Father God, I ask right now that your presence be felt all through the electronic waves of this meeting. For every home that is represented, may you bless it and cover it with the blood of Jesus and the blood of Jesus alone, and that every home will be honored, Lord Jesus, in a way that we are representing the future and the present of these your people. I ask, oh God, that you continue to bless the leaders, bless our council people, bless the administrator staff, the mayor of this great city, that we are called to do your will and that we will find ourselves worthy to be called the sons and daughters of the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I ask of this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Davis, for offering our prayer this evening. Now we will have our fudge allegiance. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins.
Here.
Councilman Brewer.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Brown.
Present.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yeah.
Councilman Godwin.
Present.
Councilman Lay.
Present.
Councilman Weatherspoon.
Here.
Councilman Williams. Councilman Williams.
Here.
President Brown. Mr. President, there are eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With eight members present and one absent, we have a quorum to conduct the business of the Gary Common Council. At this point, we will have the reading. We'll have our minutes. All council members should have before you the minutes of the August 4th, 2020 meeting. Is there a motion to approve said minutes?
Still move, Miss President.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay.
It's been moved and properly seconded by council members Brown and Weatherspoon. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins.
Yes.
Councilman Brewer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yeah.
Councilman Lay.
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
And President Godwin.
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With a vote of eight to zero, the minutes of our August 4th, 2020 meeting are approved. Simon of council pending ordinances and resolutions on first reading.
CPR 2020 dash forty, an amendment to ordinance 5881, section two dash 1074K regarding the hiring of academy certified police officers in the city of Gary, Indiana, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary, Chief Brian Evans, Gary Police Department.
Public safety.
CPR 2020 dash twelve, a resolution of the Common Council of the city of Gary, Indiana, as it relates to excess valuation, deduction, tax abatement for real property vacant building deduction of Alliance Steel Corporation, as approved by resolution 3050 pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point one dash twelve point one for the purpose of modifying and amending the project development agreement, modifying and amending the original form SB one BBD dated November the 2nd, 2020, and granting a waiver of noncompliance as it applies to an untimely and late filing of the January 1st, 2019 form CF one BBD and the Form 322 BBD to the Office of the Lake County, Indiana Audit and the submission of said forms to the designated body to report compliance with the original form SB one BBD, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary, Indiana Redevelopment Commission, and Indiana Office of Community Invest.
Planning and development.
Mr. President, is ordinances and resolutions on first read?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Williams.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
President, the Public Safety Committee has before it CPR 2020 dash forty. For the record, I approve this ordinance for putting out to the council.
Councilmember Brewer.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams.
The majority of the committee has approved CPR 2020 dash forty. I will put out to the council.
Thank you. Councilman Brewer.
The Plan Development Committee has before CPR 2020 twelve. I approve this to be reported out to the council. Councilwoman Atkins.
Yes.
And Councilman, I'm sorry, Weatherspoon.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, the majority of the Plan Development Committee have approved CPR 2020 twelve.
Thank you, Councilman Brewer. Councilman Williams.
President. We are. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. President.
Just report out CPR 2020 dash forty.
Okay, I thought I had done that. Okay, Mr. President, the majority of the committee has approved CPR 2020 dash forty for reporting out to the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer.
Mr. President, I already poured out CPR 2020 twelve, Plan Development.
Thank you. This time, we will have our special and select. I wanted to take a privilege and Ms. Peggy Blackwell of the Visit Miller Beach organization, as well as with the Shops on Lake Street, is going to give a brief, very brief overview of the efforts to improve wayfinding and signage and furthering the growth, the small business growth on Lake Street, where we know a significant investment has been made to improve the roadway, the streetscaping, and the accessibility of the shops on Lake Street. So I've given Ms. Blackwell three minutes to kind of give us an overview of their efforts and some of the needs that they foresee, that we foresee. I happen to represent the first district where the shops on Lake Street are. So Ms. Blackwell, unmute yourself, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Okay, thank you. I was hoping Christopher, I know Chris, I hopefully Christopher is also out there unmuting because we're gonna kind of do this in tandem, but here, let's get going. Christopher, are you there?
Hello?
He is here. He's here.
All right, hello, thank you for having us. My name is Peggy Blackwell. I'm the president of Visit Miller Beach, and I also run an Airbnb business here.
And I'm Christopher Derosak. I'm president of Shops on Lake and also an owner of Indie Indie Bang Bang.
Um, well, when I first brought our property here 20 years ago, everybody was saying how much potential there was in Miller because of the scenic beauty.
And I've been here for about eight years with our business. But even today, the downtown is still struggling. We're here to talk about the wayfinding signage that is desperately needed.
So even though the new streetscape looks great, we already have lost some businesses and we're still in a pandemic. So we're concerned about things getting worse. But in my role with Visit Miller Beach, we meet regularly with the business owners, the community leader, South Shore CBA, where we joined as a partner to promote tourism here because tourism brings in a lot of spending and investment. It's the sixth largest industry in Indiana and growing at a healthy pace. A lot of people may not realize that the Indiana Dunes are the state of Indiana's top tourist destination. I think in 2019 attracted almost four million people. And our research shows that Gary only gets 2% of all the Indiana Dunes visitors, only 2%, even though we've got great beaches, trails, even a visitor center. And we're having problems getting people into, you know, beyond the, into our destinations. They're reacting, we get feedback from the Airbnbs. They do react to negative stereotypes, and people don't know how to find our destinations. Christopher?
Yes, so we're, so we've been meeting with the redevelopment groups and having meetings over the past year on this project. We met with incoming, you know, at the time, Mayor Prince and his advisor, Lyle, his advisor, excuse me, Darnell Lyles, to get the buy-in on the project. After meeting with Prince at his office, you know, we continue to work on this initiative to move forward, working with the redevelopment and economic development. After that, we also met with them again after our, our final plan back in this, this past June to, to basically kind of get a general timeline on what we're looking at, which I, which I believe that we're talking about next spring.
So basically, what we did is we created an actionable plan for interstate and local highway signs, community wayfinding locations within Miller neighborhood identification for Etna and Glen Ryan. We even did some mockups, I, you know, that could be used for the signs going off of the Marquette Park signs, and we also did cost estimates using InDOT information. Just trying to pull it together as much as possible to give the city administration kind of a head start on the project.
Exactly. And we're, we're here basically to ask for your guys' support because our businesses need it, not only the Shops on Lake, not only the restaurants and the shops and the bars, but all the businesses basically in the city of Gary need these signage. So people know that we're here, that we exist, and we can get a lot more people from outside the neighborhood coming in and spending their dollars in the city.
Just one more small fact, just to help you understand why this is so important, is that even though we are the two, the closest National Park Service destinations to Chicago and Indianapolis, we still only get 2% of the visitors. And the other communities do have wayfinding, even off the highway, to direct their, their tourists to their destinations. And 80% of the, of the tourists to this area come from Illinois and other parts of Indiana. So that's why that's really important. So again, I'm Peggy Blackwell from the Visit Miller Beach Project.
And I'm Christopher Derosak, one of the businesses on Lake Street.
I want to say thank you both to Peggy and Chris, both of whom have worked tremendously hard over the past year and a half, really, to improve wayfinding and to try to boost the tourism, which we know is so critical to the sustainability of local businesses and the vibrancy of what we're doing on Lake Street and Shelby Street and in Etna and Glen Ryan as we prepare for the double track that is going to come. We want to make sure that we have sustainable businesses that we can build from as we do transit oriented development and other real estate developments in that critical area for our city in terms of infrastructure. So thanks both to you, Peggy, as well as Chris, for all of your work and your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Any other members for special and select?
Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer is recognized, and then Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's say thank you to Peggy and Chris for coming on and sharing that information. Definitely, the way street is great improvement that has happened. And I visit Lake Street quite a bit, and the businesses are suffering at this time. And we continue to ask the citizens of this community to continue to support the businesses on Lake Street. But also, definitely what Councilman Godwin was saying, definitely coming off 8094 and 90 off the toll road, there needs to be a special signage there, big letters coming across the road and everything, letting people know exactly what we have. And that need to be declared, it is declared a destination place, and we need to take advantage of it as residents of this great community. So I do support you all in those efforts there, and I'll do whatever I can to make sure that happens. And also, this is for Mr. President, Godwin, and for the mayor. I got a call yesterday, and I went out to, I think this is Sylvian Street, Sylvian and Maple, out in the first district there. And I got a chance to speak to a resident which had got a petition signed, which I will circulate this to you, Councilman Godwin, the mayor, and also to the large members. Where the street is just corroding. It just basically, the kids can't play on the street. Water is now detouring from going down the street to the drainage now going towards property. And this street needs to be repaired. Got a chance to walk, and I got a chance to visit other neighbor's property where the water had done damage to the property, where people had fixed the, fixed their property, but the problem still exists. And for people to continue to do more investment to their property, we need to do our part to make sure that we take care of this. I wouldn't say that this street should prioritize any other street, but I would say they should. If you see the street, the street is literally just crumbling. It's not even walkable. There's a mailbox on this street where residents have to stop and get mail. And there's a resident that lives right there where when people stop, they slide past the mailbox because there's so many, the street is just crumbling just that bad. I saw in that petition, one of the ones that stuck out to me were the little kid that fell and scarred himself all the way up by playing, just basically playing it because the street is falling apart. And the 85-year-old that signed a petition and just said that she gets afraid to walk in her neighborhood, something of this nature here. I think we need to take care of it, especially with water that's coming towards property. And these people are making a great effort and keeping up their property, making improvements, but they want to make greater improvement, but because of the water issue, they cannot do those things. So I would like to just make sure that you get these, President Godwin, and also I'll make sure the mayor get a copy also, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make two announcements. One is our first six district community forum was last week, and it went really well. I want to make an announcement about the second one, which will be coming up on September 17th at 6 o'clock. We'll announce the special guest at our next meeting because they haven't reported back that they can do it or not. Also, this, this Saturday, this is Penny Parade for the sixth district. It will be at noon, and we'll start off the parade at Billy's Sim School, Two Yard. Route will be from down Georgia to the east side of the, of the neighborhood, back down to Broadway, and then, of course, crossing over to the west side of the sixes.
Thank you, Councilman Williams.
Mr. President.
Councilman Weatherspoon.
Yeah, just want to take the time and recognize a couple of citizens here, Ms. LaShay Willis and Ms. Jackwell and Crawford. For those of you all who have the Visit Facebook, there was a, a reported dump site in the second district. This was over on, at Ambridge Park on Second Avenue, near the, between Grant Street and Tav Street. And I mean, it just was deplorable, the dumping that went on there. It's like someone had torn down a house and left it there, as well as the fact that the weeds had grown up around the fence that was around the basketball court, wow, you know, just wildlife trees, you name it, it was there. Ms. LaShay Willis and Ms. Jackwell and Crawford organized her neighborhood, which there is in the Ambridge community, and they went out and they spent the day cleaning up this area. They were very successful, along with the help of General Services, who came by afterwards and got it. So again, I just want to thank Ms. LaShay Willis and Ms. Jackwell and Crawford because they absolutely represent an example of what we need more of in this community. Also today, and although I've been gentleman, the gentleman will remain nameless because he asked me not to mention his name. There was a gentleman also who was well-known in this community that was also cleaning up the tennis court at the Brunswick Park. He says he and a friend of his, they use that tennis court often. It's one of the better ones in the city. But just, just seeing the neighbors, just seeing the residents cleaning up, you know, I just simply have to take my hat off to them. And again, we need more of that in the community. Also, I don't know if you all saw what was in the paper today, but the Indiana Historic Preservation Committee has basically put Gary Roosevelt High School on the 10 most endangered landmark list for the state of Indiana, which is a good thing. Also found that our own Gary Preservation Committee is also working toward making, getting landmark status, not only for Gary Roosevelt, but also for City Hall as well. So want to congratulate them on that and just, just the recognition of a couple of historic monuments or buildings that are right here within our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Weatherspoon.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell.
Good afternoon, good evening. Please join the fifth district in our dumpster days. We have a dumpster day set up for August the 28th through the 31st. 10 dumpsters will be throughout the fifth district. Those locations are Ridge Road and Pierce, 24, I'm sorry, 3477 Calhoun Street, 2120 Madison Street, Ridge Road and Tav, 25th and Maryland Street, and Ridge Road in Virginia. This will be the 28th through the 31st, so please bring all your junk. Please place it in the dumpsters, not around the dumpsters. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell. Other members for special and select?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Atkins.
Just have a couple of things. The first, I wanted to extend a thanks on August the 8th, which was two Saturdays ago, I believe. The fourth district hosted their first Summer Bazaar. That event was well-attended, and I want to thank all of those vendors who supported this initiative. We had about 25 vendors turn out, and between the hours of 12 or 4, we had high traffic. And I want to be clear to the, to the public who was not able to attend, who might have read about the event. So the event was more than just something to do. You know, in the fourth district, I try to lead with intent, and we execute with purpose. So the reason for the event was to provide a marketplace during the pandemic to support our small businesses, also to support a majority of black-owned businesses within our community and recycle our dollar with each other. We also had the census team on site to help increase our response rate at the city to our census. And then also, we did have participation from organic fruits and vegetable vendors in an effort to address the food desert here within the city. So I want to thank all of those participants who, who joined us. I definitely want to thank my colleagues, Councilwoman Linda Barnes Caldwell for being a vendor and also supporting, and definitely Councilwoman of third district, Mayor Brown, for attending and supporting as well. I do want to give a couple of other fourth district announcements. Upcoming on Wednesday, September the 2nd, we will be hosting a table talk with Todd Session. As you guys know, we introduced that initiative in January of this year, and the goal of that is for us to have fluid conversations about the progress we're making in the fourth, ideas that we want to discuss, and particular issues that we want to address as we prepare for our fourth district community meeting, which will take place October, Thursday, October the 1st. So again, the table talk session will be on September the 2nd. The fourth district community meeting will be on Thursday, October the 1st. The details in terms of the locations or venues of those meetings will be communicated to you guys via my mailing list. Also, you can call my administrative assistant, Ms. Karen Lane, at 811-1315, and they will make sure that we post that information on the Gary Common Council site. Lastly, but not least, myself, fourth district council representative, and my colleague, first district and president, acting president of the council, William Godwin, will be hosting this upcoming Thursday, the Emerson Blitz. As we talked on the last meeting, this is an opportunity to engage and promote an inclusive environment for our residents in the Emerson area. We have a number of community partners who will be there on site. The flow of this meeting is more of a trade show flow. We have these vendors and our community participants there so that residents can get information about these particular entities and then also learn about the upcoming developments that's happening in the Emerson area. Some of those community partners in attendance will be Dr. Seabrook and the Community Health Net Centers. The Gary Railcats have confirmed participation. Gary Life Community Center, Faith, CDC, Progressive. The United States Census Bureau will be on site. Our Calumet Township trustee, Ms. Kimberly K. Robinson, will be on site to give information about her services. Our House Gary, this is where the event will be taking place, but they also will be there to hand out information about their events going forward. And lastly, but not least, we will be having MVH partners on site to engage with the residents and let us know about the three phases of development that is coming to the Emerson area. Again, that event is this upcoming Thursday, which is August the 20th, at Gary Art House, 411 East Fifth Avenue, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Atkins, and I certainly look forward to joining you Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 at Art House for the Emerson Blitz. So we're definitely looking forward to that. Other members for special and select?
Mr. President, I have a couple of things.
All right, Councilman.
Let me do the first one. It's real easy. I like to have information on this Economic Development Corporation. What brought it to my attention, you consistently was talking about 15% going into that. So I'd like to see your 2020 budget, certainly what was in the, in that corporation. I understand it has a bank account. I understand Mr. Brewer is the president, so I'd like to get some information. I know absolutely nothing about it, and certainly you're asking for 15%. The other issue is I have consistently said that this CBA committee, in fact, is not a 501(c)(4). So let me go back and start with the, I said it prior to July the 28th. On July the 28th, and I don't have it in front of me, but I'm pretty much reduced to memory. On July the 28th, we received a communication from you, Mr. President, that came from Mr. Dylan. In that communication, he said he spoke to the Internal Revenue Service and that they had awarded the 501(c)(3), 501(c)(4) on February the 4th, 2020. Well, there's an inconsistency there because the letter that was sent to us and the dates and everything around this letter said they awarded it January 2020. And that letter came out to the council on or about August the 3rd, indicating they received the information on August the 1st that had a August the 4th date on it. So, and certainly since that time, they have consistently said that I was certainly disseminating bad information. I sent the council, I received a letter latest in time, and I'm sure you guys understand that is the way the law works. I received a letter from the Internal Revenue Service dated August the 10th, 2020, which indicated that this committee did not have a 501(c)(4). I made it available to the council, I believe, on August the 13th. So I'm just not making up information as had been so indicated. But let me tell you how it can be cleared up because at this point, I think you have to accept the latest letter. One of the ways they can clear it One of the ways they can clear it up, I've asked for it consistently, and maybe the council members have not understood. It's called the 1024A. If they produce that document, that document is how you acquire the 501(c)(4). So apparently, I've consistently asked for that. They have not presented the document. Now, I understand you're attempting to adopt my idea of creating a special commission. And when I say adopt, you're adopting it. You didn't come up with it, you're adopting it. The problem with that, you're taking quality and changing it to quantity. In other words, I suggested 11, you went to 17. I have a formula that I use to vote. The needs of the many outweigh the few, and certainly the one. In this case, it may be the needs of the many outweigh the few, and certainly the three. So, so again, what, what I've done with my amendment, and you also seem to be bringing up something else. I don't see how anyone can apply to sit on any commission or any committee that does not submit a resume and present themselves for an interview. As an example, I believe you said someone that was applying for a janitor's position was required to submit a resume. I certainly will not agree that because they live in the 1st District, or you may believe that you can get votes from them, that they can be put on this commission that I'm suggesting, and certainly not 17, without doing anything but sending in a lot of interest. And the reason I'm going through this is called truth and veracity. If they have not been truthful on the 501(c)(4), then I'm not sure how we can use these people to do anything. And as far as two people, this African-Americans have been trained in this city that I'm aware of since 1968. I was part of it. That's 52 years ago. The problem is not the lack of training of African-Americans. The problem is the lack of admission into the unions. Now, I think Dr. Needham and Ms. McCready would serve, serve this community much better if they talked to the white unions. I can't go there and convince them to certify any program they set up as a, as a program where, where they will allow these apprentice program, where they allow these people to join the union. That's where I think the greatest need of these two individuals to help this city would be, it'd be where it should be placed. Talking to the unions, not necessarily to this council or to African-Americans on training. We've done that. We're the most trained people probably in America today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lay. Any other members for special and select? I want to add one announcement. The 1st District will have a Zoom community meeting on September the 3rd, Thursday, September the 3rd, at 6 o'clock, 6:30 p.m. It will focus on recycling, environmental affairs, as well as Marquette Park and our other parks, Edna and Glen Ryan in the 1st District. So we're hoping to have Mr. Eric Reeves, as well as Mr. Dan Macari and Ms. Brenda Scott Henry to join us to talk about recycling, environmental affairs, and our parks in the 1st District Thursday, September the 3rd, at 6:30 p.m. And the Zoom information will be disseminated to the public. I believe, I don't think I have another announcement. Any other members for special and select?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brown?
I just have a question. Councilwoman Lay has asked that whoever is going to be a part of this CBA agreement, that they submit some information about themselves, a resume, or come in and be interviewed. And I, and I see absolutely nothing wrong with that. I think that if we, as councilpeople, are going to receive funding from these companies, then we certainly ought to know something about these persons. So I, you know, I don't see anything wrong with that. I think, in fact, I think it ought to happen. I think we ought to get some information about these persons and have, have some interviews. So I, I just want to say I support that, Attorney Lay. I think that they should be interviewed. And I think that they should, at a very minimum, submit a resume. That's, that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brown. Any other members for special and select? All right. Seeing and hearing none. We will now go to our council pending ordinances and resolutions on third and final reading.
CPO 2020-39, an Amendment to the Community Benefits Agreement Ordinance. Friends by Corey's Lay, Councilor Large, Mayor Jerome Prince, sitting here.
Councilman Brewer? You're muted.
Thank you. Mr. President, I would defer this back to committee. And I would ask if Corporation Council will also give us an outline of all the changes that need proposed. I know it's been requested, but I haven't received it. And I talked to you earlier, and you indicated you hadn't received it also. But I definitely want to add that this will go back to committee, because there are some things that still need to get hammered out before we do pass it.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Barnes-Codwell. Any questions or discussion?
I'm a little bit unclear. You said Corporation Council is going to, what are you asking Corporation Council for?
I'm asking for a breakdown of all the changes that's been made to this, the amendment changes. There was quite a few that were laid out. You had yours in Section 2, but there was quite a few from the administration that had been laid out also.
So you're asking for him to do Section 2 for you?
Do it all, all the changes.
A summary.
A summary. Thank you.
No, no, thank you. So a summary, so now we're going back, as opposed to us reading it, we're now going to ask the Corporation Council to become the teacher? In other words, you, you have the original 9305, you have the amendments. Why wouldn't the council, I mean, I, reading is fundamental. Why wouldn't they read it themselves? I don't understand this procedure.
There's a lot of changes, Mr. Lay, and that request was put in at the last meeting, so I'm kind of.
Actually, it was put in in July.
Yes. So I'm just trying to honor all changes that's been brought up at this time. And that's the request that was brought up, so I want to make sure I'm clear on that.
Okay, so you're confused about my changes? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, I can give them to you, they're, they're in the amendment. I don't think, I haven't talked to Corporation Council about my amendment.
I want a summary page for everybody. This is not just for me, this is for everyone to follow along where we at with this.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Mayor here.
Mayor Prince?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here this evening. So there's been a lot of discussion about CBA, essentially since the beginning of the year. This administration got engaged in those conversations almost immediately. And to that extent, expressed immediate concern, not only about the CBA, but as well as the MOU that was associated with the casino project, as well as the CBA in general. The Councilman Lay certainly brings up some interesting points, which I don't need to reiterate, he shared them all with you. And, you know, at that particular point, in the spirit of cooperation and wanting to come up to, or at least with some amicable solution between the council and the administration, I agree to be a co-sponsor on the amendments. But to be clear, this administration still has concerns about the CBA. And, and not only has concerns about it, quite frankly, we, we think that, at the very minimum, it's something that should be studied amongst the administration, as well as the council. And if at all, better documents certainly can be crafted and should be submitted. To that extent, we also made some concerted efforts to address some of the deficiencies that we saw that existed, particularly the opportunities for traditionally underserved representatives of the community to have an opportunity to participate in government, and those being MBEs, obviously, women business enterprises, as well as veterans. And we made exceptional efforts to amend our procurement processes and policies in addition to including additional responsibilities for Tammy Davis, who is actually on the line this evening and may want to speak to, to some of the benefits and some of the impact that we've certainly been able to achieve towards that end. The point is, Mr. Chairman, and, and members of council, I believe that there are clear impediments to the CBA that certainly would thwart business rather than encouraging them. And certainly, we all want to provide opportunities for our residents. I think the councilman's perspective in terms of what one of the impediments to that is, is spot on, and it's not necessarily always training. But in addition to that, certainly the opportunity to join in the union when you're talking about a specific industry. But if the council will indulge us just a little bit more, I'm fairly certain, based on the conversations that I've had with Ms. Davis, that she would love to share some of the recent impact that she's had relative to compliance and ensuring that the procurement processes that we've engaged in, as well as other efforts to include those neglected groups, are, are addressed. And if it's okay with you, Chairman, I'd ask that she, if she, if she is prepared to this evening. I don't want to put her on the spot.
I'm prepared, Mayor, and President Godwin. Should that be your wishes?
Yeah, I would just say that this is really a conversation for a committee. And we've had a couple of committee meetings, we have not heard these perspectives. And I think to do this now seems to be a little inappropriate. We, I agree, we need to take a deep dive on this. We need to have all the parties at the table, your administration, folks from the CBA, folks in the business community, so that we're, and of course, council members, so that we're all on the same page. And so I'm hopeful that this conversation will extend to the committee meeting that the Chair of the Planning Committee has proposed. But please go forward.
One of the, Mr. President, you just, you just allowed someone to discuss signage and, and all of those things during the meeting. I think this is absolutely more important to this entire community than, than just the signage sitting out there on 12 and 20, or wherever it was suggested. You're talking about 15% going into this Economic Development Corporation. So we, we certainly can't give 15% to that, 15% to CBA. I'm not even sure why we give 15% to the Economic Development Corporation.
Well, I don't, I mean, that's fine, that's your opinion. But I think that's something that we should hear in the committee meeting.
We should vote on it too. I believe if the council was doing it, it should be a vote by the council.
Well, absolutely, that's why we're having a vote. We have a motion on the table.
No, I understand, I'm not, no, I'm not talking about that. I was talking about what Mr. Mayor offered it. We've dealt with other things. You asked for questions before we voted. I understand, we voted, wasn't returning to committee.
Right, not about the substance of it. This has turned into a conversation about the substance, which I'm fine.
Mr. Chair.
Mayor Prince.
So, 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 Mr. Chair, I actually agree with you. I, I, I think that this certainly could be handled in a different venue. We were simply only attempting to answer the question that, that the council posed. We thought it was an excellent opportunity. Again, we, we've addressed these concerns from probably the second or third week of the administration, as well as, you know, have been willing to continue to engage in those conversations. But I agree with you, probably would be a lot more substantive if, you know, it's done. But again, we're prepared to answer or address it tonight, or whenever the Chair sees.
I withdraw my request. Mr. President, I withdraw.
Thank you, Mayor Prince, and acknowledge Councilman Lay. So any other questions or discussion about the motion on the table?
Mr. Chair, this is, let's see, I'm very busy. Just, just really quickly, I do have one, one thing that I wanted to discuss. You guys had asked for a summary of the, of the changes. Now, is that different from the amended version where there are old sections for the new sections and cross-out sections for the sections that were being removed?
Can someone repeat that, because I could barely hear.
Oh, he was saying, basically, there's a edited version, I suppose, track change version. The request that was made back in July, given that there were so many more changes beyond what Councilman Lay spoke to vis-a-vis Section 2, there was a lot of substantive changes that were not just mere word changes, but had, had substantial substantive implications, that we thought it was important for all parties involved, the council certainly, and also the CBA committee group that was part of this legislation that was passed by at least four of the members who are on this current council. So we thought it would be helpful to have that summary. These are, this is what we're doing. Here are the implications of that. Because what we noticed is that it's not merely word changes, but some of these changes have a significant degree about whether this CBA would even apply, even to Broadway laws. Right? So we're aware that wording has implications. It's not like we're changing and, or, the, or that, right? This is, these are substantive moves. So it's important that everybody's clear exactly what's being done and what the implications of those changes are. That was the request in July, that was the request at the last committee meeting, and that is, again, the request at tonight's council meeting.
And I apologize, I think I was under the impression that the, that the track change version was showing what was removed and what was being added had suffice, so if that's not the case, I will, I'll put together, a short summary of the description of the changes.
Thank you. Any other questions and discussions about the motion on the table? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2020-39 is deferred back to the Planning and Development Committee.
CPO 2020-41, in order to submitting Chapter 123 entitled Zoning Code of the Quota Ordnances at the State of Gary, Indiana, Petitioners Federal Entertainment LLC, 111 Monument Circle, Suite 777, Indianapolis, Indiana, property at 29th and Gary Street, Gary, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer?
I'm Opepeza, CPO 2020-41.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Barnes-Codwell. We'll have our overview at this time.
Mr. President, this is ready.
You're a little choppy. I don't know whether others are having a challenged hearing, but you may want to speak into the mic a little bit.
It's a little bit better, I gotta get a little bit closer.
Okay.
Is that better?
That's better.
I believe there's 2020-41 and 2020-42 that are before the council, is that correct?
That's correct.
If we could do both at the same time, they are actually both ordinance, or they're amendments, the ordinance, zoning ordinance, that would thereby vacate the portion of Calhoun Street that in an alleyway, that are within the, within the footprint of the casino and adjacent there too. If you could, if we could, in order for, you know, to save everybody's back here on the council, to handle it both at the same time, essentially, I, I believe we have Ms. Karen Price, I believe Mr. Walker, and also Mr. Ziegler as well, on the line, they would like to cover a portion, or cover a part of the review as to what this, what this ordinance actually does, aside of the general description that it actually vacates those, those public ways between.
Are you calling on Ms. Price to speak? Attorney Price?
Yes.
All right.
So the ordinances will allow for the. So, the ordinances will allow for the Hard Rock to have the right-of-way for their parking lot. So we've done the proper service, and so I didn't know if there were any questions regarding that.
Is there any objection by any residents in that area?
I don't think she heard you. Attorney Price?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. Price, was there any objection by any of the residents in that area? I know you have sent out letters to everyone, and we're all aware what's happened there, but just want to know.
No, we haven't received anything.
Okay.
Public hearing, public hearing is tonight, however.
Right.
Right, there's a notice.
What was that again?
The public hearing is tonight, so there was a notice for anyone that was objecting could come and speak tonight.
Okay.
I guess my question would be, are we putting the cart before the horse? If we haven't had a public hearing yet, why would we vote on it?
That, that's great, by me, Mr. Chair, this is Rodney, the city attorney.
You're not very clear to hear. Do you want to come back into the chamber? I know you're in City Hall, and maybe you can sit here and just speak, because we can't, it's an echo effect.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that, since we can't hear Rodney. The statute permits having the public hearing tonight. So the public hearing notices were sent out for anyone that wants to object to show up tonight while it's on the third and final.
So I guess my question is, we're voting on it, not knowing whether the community objects to it?
No, they've had notice, it's been pending, they've had notice before the Planning Commission. Initially, we did have public come out, their concerns were addressed, and then it passed on through the process to the Plan Committee, and now it's here on ordinance. So they've had at least three opportunities to speak out on it, and the statute, if you look at it, actually permits the hearing to be part of the council deliberation tonight.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, I know, just to piggyback off the attorney, it was advertised, and we are, we have tested this via Zoom, it's advertised also, so anyone that had a problem, they could log down, where you have to open up the public for anyone to speak.
So we need to open up now, after the overview, if people want to come? Okay, and I presume proper notice was made to people that we've been meeting, and they had access to it, but in any event, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, notice was mailed and posted out at the property location.
Perfect, thank you. So at this time, are there any members of the public who would like to speak about these ordinances? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, is there any other overview or insight that the administration would like to provide? Any questions council members have, questions or discussions?
Mr. Chair.
Attorney Williams.
If you're going to take both matters at one time, the clerk must read the second ordinance. And it's, and it's, of course, if there's no objection from a council member.
Seeing and hearing no objection, Madam Clerk.
CPO 2020-42, in order to meaning Chapter 123 entitled Zoning Code of the Cota Ordnances at the City of Gary, Indiana, Petition and Spectacle Entertainment LLC, 111 Monument Circle, Suite 777, Indianapolis, Indiana, property at 29th and Gary Street here in here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilman Brewer.
Mr. President, the same thing with this one here, the overview was given. You still have to allow the public to speak, just to get it.
And you're, you're moving for passage, correct?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, move for passage, CPO 2020-42. The same overview that was given for 41 is for this one also, too, but you still have to allow the public, if anyone would like to speak for 42 also.
And who's going to second that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell. This time, we'll have any public comment about CPO 2020-42. We have two screens tonight, so I want to make sure I don't miss anybody. Seeing and hearing no one, and assuming I will ask, are there any questions or discussion for council members on CPO 2020-42? Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins.
Yes.
Councilman Brewer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell. Councilman Lay.
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
President Gower.
Yes.
Mr. President, vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPO 2020-41 and CPO 2020-42 pass in our sort order.
CPR 2020-11, a resolution of the Gary Common Council confirming Resolution Number 2020-07 that established and designated a certain area of the City of Gary, Indiana, as the Broadway Loss Economic Rehabilitation Area to which deductions from excess value may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the City of Gary pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary, Councilwoman Lana Brewer, Councilman Lard, Indiana Redevelopment Commission, and the Office of Community Investment.
Councilman Brewer.
Mr. President, I will ask if CPR 2020-11 be deferred to our September 1st meeting, Assistant DM. Reason for the CBA, there are issues with the CBA, and if we pass this tonight, those changes will, will go directly, have to be applied to CPR 2020-11.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell. Questions and discussion at this time? Seeing and hearing?
I, um.
Is this?
It's Pete.
Okay, Mr. Swiger.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to interject, and I apologize. I certainly understand, and I want to give everybody as much time as they want to review this. You know, but we did have a pretty good, and I thought, positive conversation at, at, you know, the, the meeting last week, and was very hopeful to come forward here. We're really risking this development, and the timeframes are starting to create a risk to this project, and further deferral of this decision ultimately will have big ramifications and possibly prevent the project from occurring. We've got cliff dates and deadlines. This request for tax abatement was first submitted October of 2019. We are nearing a year, and I'm still trying here, and we've got a cliff date. The project has to be completed by the end of next year. And if we don't get started in August, or we're risking winter conditions, which are going to add $500,000 worth of costs that are going to drastically make this project infeasible. I've been fighting an uphill battle, trying to keep these resources in place. Just last week, we lost $300,000 worth of local resources. We're, we're plugging holes in, in, in trying to keep this thing afloat. I'm, I'm only mentioning this because I want you to know that there is a potential dire risk to this development, and ultimately, the future developments, if we can't get this across the finish line quickly. I mean, there are some serious risks to the project, and we want to get it done. We want to bring $11 million worth of new investment to you. It was structured specifically to build a, to fit, and ultimately, when we finally filled the gaps, we've lost, we've lost ground, and additional commitments or requirements have come forward. I, I honor whatever decisions you make here, but I really want you to consider about, you know, whether, whether this two weeks is, is that important to further talk about this, when we've been talking about? I think my first discussion with council even on this was, was May. And, and so we're, we're trying to do everything we can, all the things that the CBA we're committing to for the future phases, but this one's really tricky when, you know, this thing was all funded and prepped and propped and supported by the city before the CBA even existed. We want to make commitments, we're trying our best. I just only wanted to express the true risk that we're facing now. I've, I've really got some pressure from our lenders and investors, and if we can't get this across the finish line over the next couple of weeks, it is really at risk.
Mr. Swiger, I, I have a couple of questions, and I certainly understand the sentiment you expressed. I think what Councilman Brewer is suggesting that, are you comfortable with the current CBA? Because if we pass this tonight, you're subject to it in its form as passed in December of 2019.
My more recent request, and what I've been trying to present to the, to the committees, as well as to council, is that I'm, I'm requesting some leniency from the CBA, under the premise, we're, we're happy to make the 15% contribution via the tax abatement. We found ways to fund it, we're willing to fund 15% from the tax abatement. But beyond that, some of the CBA requirements simply would require rebidding and delay the project drastically, as well as increase cost to the project. You know, we really went through a process here in good faith with city direction and city involvement that got us to this point. So, yeah, I do hope you'll consider, the, the city council has the ability to consider leniency or waivers from the CBA requirements. I'm not necessarily proposing even waivers from them all, but certainly to maybe help us allow for the fact that we've already bid the development, and it's, it's really ready to sit here and sign a construction contract. We, we are hopeful that you'll, you'll consider allowing us to move forward with, with the project as stand.
Well, I guess my concern is that, is that the CBA is already locked, and so I don't know about leniency in terms of it, if we.
Right in the CBA, it clearly says that they, at the council's permission or decision, they can waive all and parts of the CBA agreement.
I think it says.
My, my hopes are, is maybe there will be some lenience in concession here, based on our timing, under the premise that we're committing to fully all the CBA requirements in the future phases. You know, the CBA does allow for that.
I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Atkins, this is in her district, and she's also in the, she's been very involved with this. Councilwoman Atkins?
Thank you. So I do, I think that the wording that Pete is referring to is the last section, and it states that if the council and/or, I believe it is, is the verbiage, the administration or the executor requests any type of leniency or waiver to the CBA, it can be considered. So, you know, that's something that we can talk about as it relates to Phase 1, but Pete just stated that there was commitments already spoken about for Phase 2, and I'm not sure if I'm aware of what those commitments are. And then also, is that those commitments, have they been in writing? Or are you saying those commitments as it relates to the CBA, as it is, as the language is as today?
The commitment that I was attempting to make for Phase 2 was, is that whatever form of the CBA exists, we are happy, whatever form of the CBA ultimately council chooses to have in place, we are happy to honor those commitments. The commitment I'm making right now is based off of the existing CBA. That's what we provided to our general contractor, as far as trying to price accordingly. So the commitments are certainly to meet whatever existing approved, up-to-date CBA is in existence. I really don't know what changes are being proposed or not being proposed in the CBA myself. So, yeah, my, my commitment that I'm attempting to make is, is if administration and council was willing to do some waivers and provide some leniency on Phase 1 from the CBA, just based on the timing of the development and the risk of, of the schedule, we are 100% committed to any and all, meeting any and all requirements of the CBA on Phase 2 and Phase 3. We're happy to put that in writing. In addition to that, ultimately, we're going to have to ask the administration for some support letters that would provide commitments that will help our application score well, and we would be 100% happy for those commitment letters to note the developer's condition, required obligations to meet the CBA requirements.
Mr. Chair.
So what does that mean, letters from the administration, in terms of, of what? Or if the mayor wants to address that, maybe you all have talked about that. What does that mean?
Mr. President, if possible, I'd like to go ahead of the mayor.
Councilman Lay.
Okay, we have a pending amendment coming through on 9305, and I noticed you said, this particular project is for the City of Gary. Tax abatement is not in the 4th District, and I certainly stay in the 4th District. It's over the entire city. So I would suggest we not send it back to the committee. Why are we gambling? Again, I, I think the CBA, if we're talking about the committee, I don't see how we can deal with it as is. We would be talking about extending it even further if, if my amendment went through, because we got to go through interviews, and we got to go through resumes to put this commission together. I would, I would suggest we can't afford, as a community, to lose, lose projects like this. It's going to become harder and harder for the City of Gary to encourage developers to come here and do something. So I would suggest we not send it back to the committee. We take a vote, we pass it, and then let it fall as it may based upon the Amendment 9305. Because even after it's amended, it don't have to go through. I mean, certainly, that could be, in fact, vetoed if the mayor so chose to do so. So that's all I'm saying, let, let it go through, and we'll deal with 9305, you know, afterwards.
I guess, I just, Mayor Prince?
Well, I, I can defer, Mr. Chair, I'll wait until after your comments.
No, I was just, wanted to get clarification, because the current CBA is the one that I understand there was problems with and concerns about in terms of being in compliance. That is the existing law, the existing rule that exists today.
I understand.
If we, in fact, pass this tonight, you're subject to the existing CBA. And whatever we do in the future, and however it's, it's done, or whatever that happens, if it happens, may not necessarily apply to the tax abatement that's being granted tonight.
Well, we can make it retroactive now. This, this is not, this is not a criminal law. In other words, we can make this, this amendment retroactive. In other words, again, because this has been sent back to committee numerous times, that now we have run into a problem simply of time. The gentleman, and I certainly have never spoken to him, is landing out before the council that you have $11 million project. And so if, if we decide that 9305 continues as it is, then he has indicated he would be subject to that, asking for some leniency in terms of what's in that document. And I believe that can be granted by the council. Other than that, when do we pass 9305? We're going to go into a committee meeting, I guess, at some point. I don't know what date that is. We got to then discuss all of that with the mayor and the administration. So we're moving probably into September. I think September 1st would be, would be our first council meeting. I saw, I said somewhere in here, that, that's what I'm suggesting. He's indicated he would buy into it, and ask for, ask for leniency. He also has indicated that this project started well ahead of that, that CBA. So again, the council could say it does not apply. It's possible for us to say that, that's, that's no problem. In other words, we would say that will not apply to this project. We can do that. I, I don't see the gamble. I don't see why we would gamble on this. I mean, it may serve some people, some of the councilman's purpose, but I, I don't think it's a good purpose.
Mr. Chair.
Mayor Prince?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll, I'll start with the councilman's last comment, and, and, and that being, is that I don't believe that because this project was started well before the CBA, from the administration's perspective, we don't believe that the C- before the CBA, from the administration's perspective, we don't believe that the CBA should actually apply to this. Having said that, another comment I was actually going to reserve for the committee meeting, but I think it's relevant now, particularly because we're, what we're essentially talking about, the councilman and myself and, and at least perhaps another council member or two on the body are suggesting that we recraft the original CBA. And to that extent, it, it's my opinion, and it's been that since the beginning of, of this term, is that there were issues and impediments with the existing CBA and, and the most effective way to address that would be to repeal the present CBA and, and to start over again and draft one that's certainly acceptable and amenable to both the administration and the council, but equally important, friendlier to business. This particular project is a prime example of exactly why we feel that the present CBA doesn't necessarily fit everything. It's not a one size fits all. We, we believe that there should probably be a menu of options when you craft an agreement like that. But as it relates to the particular Broadway loss project, in addition to the timing of the CBA relative to the project, we also believe that there are benefits that are actually built into the project that certainly would warrant a, a excuse or, or certainly a reprieve from this particular project being applicable or the CBA being applicable to this project. And I would ask the council, consider passing it this evening as well.
I will just say that to me, absolutely the CBA applies. It wouldn't matter to me if the discussion started 100 years ago. The moment at which you bring the ordinance for the tax abatement, that is when the CBA would come into force. Now, we know that no CBA, no ordinance for a tax abatement came before this body until after December of 2019. So the CBA absolutely applies. There's no question in my mind that it would apply. And let me just ask, when we talk about community benefits, and I, I think it's important, who is Mr. Swiger, who is the retail tenant for this Broadway loss development? What exactly are we creating as sixth and Broadway? Who, who's your retail tenant?
Our retail tenant is Northwest Indiana Community Action Agency.
And, and what do they do?
They're going to be providing healthcare and education.
Is that a WIC office?
It's a, yes, it's a women, infant, children health clinic.
Okay.
Yes, which employs people and provides healthcare to residents of Gary. Right now, they provide WIC throughout the county. One of the locations that's underserved for this is Gary. And what a great opportunity for residents of Gary to go to find some of their healthcare services right, right in town.
And where are there other WIC offices in Northwest Indiana?
I would have to do a Google search to be honest, but they do have other WIC offices throughout the county.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mayor Prince?
Well, well, sure, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to offer one adjustment to, to perhaps my statement and, and so you're a learned attorney and, and I'll certainly defer to your opinion, at least at this point, that, that it does apply. I guess a more relevant question is, should it apply? And to that extent, I would say absolutely not.
Well, I would, I thank you for the commendation, but I would just say that it applies if it's triggered by the CBA. And when we look at the benefit that is being granted in terms of the tax abatement over the tenure period, I think it clearly triggers the CBA ordinance that at least four of the current members of this council voted for in December. So are we saying that the CBA is not triggered by the Broadway loss tax abatement?
I would like to make the point that our application for tax abatement was made October of 2019.
To whom was that application sent?
To whom was that application sent? It was sent to the previous administration.
Was it sent to this council?
I, no, it was forwarded to, through the administration.
And I guess my concern is that you, obviously, and I'm sensitive to real estate development, let me be clear, and I'm, and I'm glad that there's development coming. But is it not the case that January, February, March, April, May went by before this tax abatement got this body and no one in redevelopment informed you that this would be a requirement? So five months you were in discussion.
We approached the new administration in January 20th, I think it was January 27th, we met with them and got them up to speed. And I don't know that they knew it at that point. I found out about the potential of the CBA, March, April, I'm sorry, maybe April, May, probably April. And I do, certainly we tried to address it as we could, but I, I just want to make the points as very clear and I understand the intent of the CBA and we want to, we accommodate and fulfill the goals of the CBA. At the same time, none of the goals can be fulfilled and none of the development, you know, affordable housing and new housing options in general are still lacking in Gary. And it's such a need to the community. I mean, neighborhood, the neighborhoods located around here have lost half of their housing stock. And that that still exists is not in the greatest of condition. We're going to be providing some really, really high quality, cutting edge product that's there to serve residents of the community and provide very, you know, low rent rates and provide a very high quality. All of these things are, are true community benefits that we may not be able to deliver without that. And, and I think that it was very wise of the last of the, the council to approve the community benefits agreement with, with the concession that council and administration have the right to consider otherwise, because there are a lot of other unique things that developments typically can't do that this development can do. But ultimately, you know, there, there has to be economic feasibility and we're, we're stretching every threshold we can just to get to where we are, saying, yes, we can get closed if you can give us some concession here.
Mr. President.
Councilman Lay.
I'm not sure I agree with your, your, your conclusion on what the law is. Why don't we pass it, get it out of the way, and then we will debate or have time to research the law. I, I think you're shooting from the seat of your pants when you say March, April, May, all of these various months. Again, why gamble? If you're right and 9305 is in, in place, then it's subject to 9305. If you're wrong and we don't pass it, we've lost possibly a project. I, I, I don't understand it. And another question you asked, I don't care what's in there as long as they're paying the necessary rent. You seem to not like WIC. Again, I don't like signs out on the highway either, but, but, and so, and all of this stuff that comes out of the first district. So again, I'm suggesting we now do something that benefits the city of Gary as opposed to your district. And we go ahead and pass it. If you're legally right, then fine, they, they have to, they have to go by it. If you're wrong, they don't. He has indicated, I believe several times, that he, he does not, he has no problem attempting to apply to it, he just simply would ask for a waiver, as I understand it. So as opposed to him finding in all of the WICS in the county and all of that, why don't we go ahead, call for a vote to pass this? And I think if this, if the council decides to vote against this project, then well, we lose money. And I think the citizens of this, of Gary should take a look very carefully at this council.
Well, thank you, Councilman Lay, and I just want to respond to those attacks on my character. I am not, I know, I'm going to respond to that. I'm going to respond to that.
And I'm going to respond to your response. I'm going to respond to your, no, no, I've, I've watched you for eight months, man. I've watched you. I've watched you for eight months. I'm not casting dispersion. Everything that you bring up comes out of the first district. You're, you're the president of this council and everything is coming from one district, even down to acknowledging when a person speak, they live in the first district. So I'm not trying to cast a dispersion on you, I'm simply asking you to take a vote, that's all.
Let me be clear, number one, there is no shooting from the hip. It was a very relevant question to ask about whether or not the CBA would apply before we pass this tax abatement, if that's what the pleasure of the body does. As it relates to signage of the first district, I'm not going to waste the council's time on that, but I think.
You've already done that.
The importance, we've already recognized the importance of tourism for the city. And we also know the importance of market rate housing. I know that low income housing tax credits are very important. I know that developer fees are very important. And I know that, we know the Gary Housing Authority pulled out of this project. And so I understand.
I just want to clarify that, there's, there's no, that's not correct whatsoever, what you just said.
What is the $300,000 that you lost from local investors?
The Gary Housing Authority is still in this development. They are providing some, some subsidies to development. They did commit $300,000 to this development and they intended to, unfortunately, just have a challenge delivering those funds. They are, order above the project, they are just unable to deliver a fund that they committed.
So the Gary Housing Authority will not be given the $300,000?
They will not, but that does not mean that they pulled out of the development.
Okay, well, I rephrase that, they will not be given the $300,000.
They will not be able to give us $300,000 that they committed to us because they were incorrect in thinking that they could.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion, Mayor Prince?
Well, well, Mr. Chair, just a couple of the comments and I, I'd certainly appreciate all the spirited debate and hopefully this particular vote comes out favorable. So, so we, I think I made it clear or retracted my statement in terms of whether it applied or not, and I'm certainly not prepared or qualified to argue that. But again, my point was whether it should or not. And just to add one other point to that, the fact that there's a health initiative component to it, to me even suggests more why it shouldn't. Lastly, and I'm almost certain that certainly veteran members of the council and perhaps some of the new members have heard this, this sentiment being expressed by some, whether it be contractors or developers, that the city is not open for business, city of Gary is not open. And you know, although I certainly don't agree with it, I think actions like this or votes like this certainly will either confirm or refugiate that statement. And again, I, I would hope as, as Councilman Lay called for, that this particular project is, is voted on this evening. And, and I believe you probably are aware of what, how I, I would hope the outcome would be.
Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer.
My reasoning for moving it back to the next council meeting was to look out for the developer on this in part and definitely don't want to put him in a check 22, which gets exactly what it's doing with the CBA running next to next. I have no problem if that's the pleasure of this body to take it for a vote, we can do just that. But I didn't want the developer to be subject to something, these changes, or what's, what we have discovered was inside the CBA, he would have to comply to it. But I would rescind my motion and I would take it for a vote, if that's the pleasure of the body.
If, if I may, this is Rodney Paul, Mr. Chair, if I could. This, this council meeting was actually set for a public hearing on this action revolution whereby, just like the, the previous motion before the, before the council, this actually has to be open for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any other question, discussion of council members before we open for public comment? Seeing now we will open for public comment, is there anyone from the public who desires to speak?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. McCray.
Yes.
First district, by the way. Thank you.
First district, absolutely, in the city of Gary. And I might, might want to remind Mr. Lay that he represents the entire city and not just the fourth district. I think there's been a conflating of issues here, conflating of the idea of the project itself with the CBA and somehow one gets in the way of the other. That is not the case. The CBA extends itself to any project that is triggered by a request for a public subsidy. And what that triggers then is a discussion of the issues of local hiring, job training, and a give back to the community. That has not happened yet. We tried to do that earlier. We tried to find out about the workforce and that's, we never even found that out. What we got was a lot of information about the project. And the project itself is what it is. But that has nothing to do with the CBA. The CBA applies to new construction projects in the city of Gary. And, and we, I don't know whether the council, I sent them out to every single council member, some, some negotiating points that we would like to make because we thought that we were going to be able to sit down with the council and, you know, hammer out whatever changes we needed to make to the original CBA. And we were willing to make some changes ourselves and I sent them out to everyone. And so everyone should have gotten them, whether they read them or not, I don't know. But we are willing to talk. What we see on the other side is not a willing to talk, they want to steamroller, they want to stealth bomb this whole process and go back to business as usual. And I ask you, where has business as usual gotten us? Has it improved our unemployment rate, which still stands at 40%? Has it increased job training? Has it led to any corporate donations to communities in this city to help make life better? No, no, no. And, and if these things were happening, I would think that there would be a big amount of publicity about these things. We know they're not happening. What this ordinance does is give the city administration and the people in the city leverage when developers come and want our money. In this case, $660,000 over 10 years. I believe we said, when we sent out some of our points that we could negotiate on, we said that we, right now in the ordinance, it says 15%. We, we could lower that depending on the project, depending on the project. We could negotiate something lower. I know people were all bent out of shape about, you know, this developer having to pay 30% of, of their subsidy. But you know, it's just amazing to me, this is all free money. This is all free money that this developer is getting. And fine, I'm glad they're getting it and I have no problem with the project itself, except that when I look at the application for the project to the state of Indiana, it's supposed to be an anti-poverty project. How can it be an anti-poverty project when there's no local hiring? And if there is local hiring, why haven't we been told of the plan? They are also supposed to have an expert on anti-poverty strategies. We would like to meet with that person. We would like to know what are those anti-poverty strategies? But as far as we're concerned, the biggest anti-poverty move that this city can make is to start having people have jobs. And that involves job training and local hiring. And that's what this ordinance is about. It is not a draconian measure to push people out of the city. And Mayor Prince, if I may say this, I have lived here since 1978 and I have heard that the city of Gary is never open for business. I have heard that over and over and over again. There's always the excuse that people say, well, I'm not coming there because they're not open for business. You know, Mayor Karen went through all of that in eight years. We've been through this over and over and over again. This ordinance does not stop any developer from some.
Point of origin, Mr. President.
Excuse me, no, excuse me, excuse me, I'm not finished.
Excuse me, she's way out, she's way out of line.
I am not finished, I am not finished.
Who are you going to recognize?
Councilman Lay.
Yes. First of all, I know exactly where I live and I know that in fact I was elected throughout this entire city, under no circumstance, under no, please don't interrupt. I, I know it's hard for you to call me council.
You interrupted me just now, sir.
No, you wasted up too much time. And first of all, I don't believe you have a right to sit down with anyone. I don't see how you're the face of anything in this city to negotiate. I certainly will not sit down with you to negotiate anything. Oh, you can laugh if you want to, you know I mean that, I have no.
I am laughing.
You can't even come up with a 1024A to give yourself legitimacy. Therefore, I'm not sure I can trust, it's called truth and veracity. I'm not sure I can trust anything that you say. In other words, there have been people here, including myself, that have been over the concentrated employment program, new careers. We have been training African Americans for years. They will not. They will not allow us in the union. Why don't you go to the union? I can't go there because I'm African-American. You're white, you can go there. Tell them to certify these programs and we get jobs.
Yes, we'd like to do that, Councilman.
I don't think she's allowed to chastise a member of this council or the mayor of this city. And that's basically what, what she's attempting to do. She sent out a letter saying, I basically said I've lied about contacting the Internal Revenue Service. I didn't lie about that. They sent a letter. I didn't, I didn't manufacture this letter. So, so again, Mr. Chairman, I think, Mr. President at least, I think we should go along with the vote. If 9305 stands, it stands. The gentleman has indicated he will comply with it. She has no right to say what we're going to reduce money to. She, she's going to reduce the money. How, how, where does she get that authority? We now have 10 members on the council. So, well, I, I call for the vote.
We're still open for public comment. Councilman Brewer?
We, we are open for public comment, still going on. And we must keep the time.
Right.
I'll keep time if the court makes-
Thank you, Ms. McCrady. You're, you've been heard.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members for comment, public, any folks in the public for comment about this order? Mr. Mosley.
No, that's Rex Blackwell.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Blackwell.
Well, thank you. First of all, I'd like to say, just as a taxpaying citizen here in the city of Gary, I really appreciate all of the discussion, lively debate, and heartfelt feelings about issues of importance. But I must say this, the reason I, I need to speak out is signage in every state that I've ever lived in for business communities are, is important. And when I hear people say that it's not, I automatically start thinking about the various signs that I have seen in the city. Now, Mr. Lay, I got to know you, as a matter of fact. I think I voted for you because I saw your sign. And I got to know you that way. So I guess I would say, you obviously think it's important. And it, and it certainly worked for you because it introduced you to me. And the same thing for businesses that are struggling and trying to make it in the city of Gary. And I just want to raise my hand, as a person that's been working as a volunteer for a year and a half, trying to bring this thing forward. I am pleading with the council and the mayor to push forward any effort that's out there to try and help these businesses that are here in the city of Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell.
I still, still there for you.
All right. Thank you. Any other members of the public would like to comment?
Yes, this, this is Emmett Moll- yes, I would just like to say this. I'm a businessman. And business is important. But I, I live in Gary and for years I have worked on behalf of community citizens in Gary on many issues. This, we're not Johnny Come Lately on this. We started out many years ago talking about building business, having the right taxes in place, having the right systems in place to get our folks working. If, I would like for people to, to drive around and talk to people. Have you been to the casino? I live five minutes from the casino and I get to the casino every week. And I talk to the employees there, the few African-Americans that work there. And every time they say, we need more. When I look at being in business and talking to people in this community, they need a means of taking care of responsibility. And that means having a job, not leaving out of this city. We have young people who say, I'm not coming back to this city, there's no jobs. If you drive around, the big, the biggest project is the, is the street project where they're putting down the mowers of pipes. All of those sites, nobody at those sites looked like me, okay? So, I, I don't know all the details about this project. I know this organization, their office is, is, is in, off of US 30, their main office is off of US 30. There are many organizations that are working with a citizen franchise and the downtrodden here in Gary. So, who is going to be at these, who is going to be owners of these projects? That's a question, okay? Because there are many projects that are created and it don't fulfill what they talk about fulfilling. They can show that residents have places to stay. So I don't, I don't know who, who these laws are for, okay? I, I know that just down the street, on 11th Avenue, that there are many buildings that are boarded up, that were low-income buildings. I know that they're right down the street, the, the housing development concourse, that's gone. Down the street the other way, Ivan Hall.
Councilman Brewer, I think is acknowledging that your time is up, Mr. Mosley. But thank you.
Okay, okay.
Any other for the public hearing? Any other folks in the public would like to speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay, I don't know who it is, but you may begin.
Sorry, this is Dr. Michaela Spangenberg.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, the CBA legislation could be the best thing that's happened for the city in a long time. To me, the fact that instead of taking that legislation and improving it for the public good, what seems to have happened is this effort to throw, rendition the works and prevent it from, you know, being recognized as law, as it was originally voted in. And to make it a less democratic process is really discouraging. I'm very happy that at last we have public comment during these meetings. I think that's great. I think that's moving back toward a democratic process. But the people of Gary need more of a voice in these processes. The council already has a voice. The council has, you know, the Planning and Development Committee. The mayor already has a voice. The people need to be able to come to the table. Because as people have said, the process as it stands already without a CBA is not working for the benefit of the people or the city. And when we look at things, we've, we've had a law on the books since the 70s that was supposed to address the lack of hiring of people in Gary, in particular, black people in Gary, on these projects. And that law has never been abided by in any meaningful way or been able to be enforced. So we need something. We can't go another, you know, 50 years without real change in the city if we're going to survive. And honestly, a lot of the things that I've heard some of the council people say have just seemed to be very disingenuous in terms of the 501(c)(4) status and this and that. You know, like, we all know the IRS is not going to email something to someone. We all know that the difference between a (c)(4) and a (c)(3) is literally just so that people in this organization can even have these conversations with government officials. Because the IRS definition of what lobbying is, is very expansive. And it's just very disappointing to me as a resident to see so much done to undermine this process. Uh, you know, if, if people were going to amend it to make it more democratic, to make, you know, whoever oversaw this be elected or something like that, that would be one thing. But to sit here and listen week after week to these discussions of either how this thing should never come to pass or how the government shouldn't have more control of it, you know, we definitely don't need that. We need our council and our mayor and our government to be willing to work with us. Thank you.
I think Ms. Tammy Davis is going to speak at this time. You're muted, okay, thank you.
I'm unmuted. Thank you so very much, President Godwin. And I am appreciative of the discussion that we are having this evening. I had an opportunity to sit with members of the community, those that have spoken this evening in regards to the Community Benefits Agreement as it currently sits. And I expressed my concerns as it was written and passed on last year. And many of my concerns have been addressed this evening. One of the things that challenges us, and I've been working in the areas of contract and labor compliance now for over 20 years. One of the things that challenges us is that we pass policies, regulations, ordinances, and they sound good at the time, but unless they are provided with the support to truly enforce it and get us ultimately where we want to go, we continue to have regulations and policies that sit for decades and generations and never getting to the ultimate point of where we want to be. And as the CBA is presented now, as it was passed, it does not provide or allow for all the support that would be needed to get us to the ultimate goal of having more local Gary African-American minority residents hired or trained. For example, with this particular project, Broadway Lofts, I know that there are federal funds involved. They are subject to Section 3, which requires the payment of Davis Bacon wages, which far exceed the living wage that is presented in the bargaining agreement. And I, as well as many of you, have heard countless times how developers and contractors complain about having to pay more to hire us, right? I know you've heard that. And when we forced them to, particularly when we're talking about the returning of the 15%, those developers, they're just going to build it, you know, right, right into the project. And so they'll be seeking greater amounts in subsidies just to account for that loss. Because that's their standard operating practice, as it is right now, of when they think they're not going to be in compliance, they just build those fees in-
Mr. President, time.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Brewer, and thank you, Ms. Davis. Perhaps this is something we can follow up on in the committee hearing on the CBA. But I think you raised some very good points for consideration, very thoughtful points and respectful. Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Uh, yes, this is, may I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
President Godwin and city council members, Dorian Carey, resident of the city of Gary and the first district. I just want to say that, notwithstanding how you decided to vote on the tax abatement tonight, I really look forward to the opportunity to have the discussion that you've put forward here between the community, this, the council and the administration on this really important question that clearly people want to have input in and feel would benefit the city. It, and the opportunity to come up with a solution and hopefully some kind of consensus so that we all see the opportunities that are available then for citizen involvement and benefits to the community from development. So I just want to say, thank you for making that possible for people in the committee and other members of the public to participate in that decision-making process. So I think that that's the direction that we ought to be looking, is to find that consensus and hopeful, and possible agreement on the best possible CBA for the city. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other members of the public for comment?
Councilman Good, Godwin, do you mind if I just do a little follow-up?
Sure, absolutely.
And, and thanks everybody for their time. One thing that I hope everybody says is, we're, we're just working hard. I, I'm wanting to work hard for the community of Gary. Want to bring-
Councilman Brewer? Make sure you close public portion.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you want to do that first, sir?
Public portion is closed, I didn't see anyone else. And so we'll go back to Mr. Swiger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to make a few points. We, we have had substantial community meetings along the way. And I know that, for those who might be looking at the last six months, you might not see as much as you, you would hope. But this has been a three-year development that started with a workshop, including 50 people and multiple community meetings, planning commissions, city council meetings. And we've always been available, I've always made myself available. I've answered every call, email, question that's been asked of me. And I've always welcomed further involvement. When we first learned about the Community Benefits Agreement, we welcomed to the public meeting that was required by that. We did meet with the Community Benefits Group and tried to show them the things we could do and the things that were more challenging to the development. We offered up additional public meetings and no additional requests or welcoming of that was, was ever provided back. So I, I really hope that, and this goes to the, the group that's on the Community Benefits Board, we're happy to still answer your questions and try and learn what you, how we can help meet your goals. We never stopped talking with them, we never stopped communicating. We also just want you to know that there is local involvement with this development. There are Gary-based subcontractors that will work this development. There are MBE subcontractors that will work this development. Women-owned businesses, other businesses in Lake County and subcontractors in Lake County are all part of this. And yes, we have made commitments to Section 3. We will be making local hiring as part of this. One of the requirements of Section 3 that's a great benefit is as our subcontractors are hiring new, new people to do the job, a certain percentage of those are, are required to be local hires. And in fact, through the CBA board, we've been introduced to two organizations that are going to help us link our subcontractors to local hires. So all of these things you're talking about, we're still working on them. We've never faltered in continuing to work on them. We want to, to bring that to its fullest extent. And we're just hopeful we can, can get this passed and get closed and, and show you what a good job we can do. And with that, we are, we've never not been supportive of the CBA. The only challenge it has brought to us is that in the 11th hour of phase two, it became a new, a new component. We're fully committed to it in phase two and three. Whatever iteration of that is, if it's the existing scenario, we will find ways to make it work. If it's a different scenario, that the council desires more, we'll make that work. That's not an issue. So we, we hope that you'll answer our requests and thank you for your time. And sorry if I rambled there a little bit, I just wanted everyone to know, we're still here. We're still available for questions and comments and trying to get this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion of council members?
Mr. President.
Councilman Lay.
Very quickly, I'm not sure why people think I'm somehow removing this commission from the people. What I'm suggesting is that this commission that we're talking about creating, anyone can apply, anyone in the city of Gary. Now, I do have some restrictions, I don't know if Mr. Poe has put it in there. They must submit a resume, they must submit themselves for an interview, and they must be residents of the city of Gary. That's the only restriction that I have. When they start talking about this meeting between people and the council, we are a second-class city. They're basically talking about town hall meetings. And, and in other words, we have been elected, as someone explained to me today, I've been elected, been elected six times, that it, it's not a town hall where we can bring the entire public together. This would be a, I'm going to have to suggest this, a few people. There's nothing wrong with a few people, but it's not a town hall. We would have to open it up for the entire community of Gary to come in. We're a second-class city. The decisions are to be made by the legislative branch and the executive branch. That's statutory, that's who makes the decision. So again, if you now decide that on various ordinances, you're going to start opening up town- So again, if you now decide that on various ordinances you're going to start opening up town hall meetings, you would have to publish that to this entire city that come in and treat it like it's a town hall. I would suggest the authority, as well as the responsibility, is in the legislative branch and the executive branch. And certainly, anyone that's on the committee, the name that's been sent to us, they certainly have a right to apply by sending a resume and submitting themselves for an interview and being a resident of the city of Gary. That's the only requirement I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other members of the council, questions or discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer.
I want to make sure that I properly, I will do my, and making sure that didn't want to second that motion.
It's seconded and withdrawn.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any questions or just, we don't need to, it's withdrawn, that's all we need to do with that, right? Any other comments or questions about the resolution?
So, Mr. President, what I need to do is I'll make a motion to pass CPR 2020-11 on third and final.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell. Any further, we've already had an overview. Is there any other questions or discussion? I just want to make sure everyone's had a chance.
Just one last question for Pete. And there's, I know you're definitely up against a time clock here, so there's no extra time that you have. You definitely need to get this done tonight, just want to be clear.
Yeah, we had a closing meeting last week and they were targeting the 27th for closing. You know, I can't literally say it'll close on the 27th, but there's two to three items that are the big, heavy, heavy final things to finalize, and this is certainly the biggest.
Okay, all right.
I would just, all right, thank you, Councilman Brewer, any other members? Right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins. Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Godwin?
Abstain.
Mr. President, the vote is seven yes, one abstention.
Seven yes and one abstention, CPR 2020-11 passes and is so ordered.
Mr. President, pending ordinances and resolutions on third and final.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Before we move on, Mr. President, if I could.
Mr. Poe.
Following the, following the, the confirmatory resolution, we do have the Form SB1 resolution as well. The confirmatory only designates the SB.
I really can't hear you that well.
I've been trying, I came downstairs hoping my connection was better.
It's really like an echo of sorts.
I'm at City Hall in the hallway locked out of my office, so I apologize, it's probably why.
Okay.
Ultimately, the Form SB1 resolution, it does not require a public hearing or discussion by the public. Only the members of the common council go for a vote for the motion to be approved by the presiding officer. So there's, I got Dan Bodich on the line and probably his audio is better than mine if he'd like to explain.
Mr. Bodich?
Yes, sir, I am on the line.
So, Councilman Brewer, I think he's raising a.
What are we talking about, which one are we talking about here? It sounded we went to something else.
There were two resolutions on the table for us. There was the confirmatory resolution, which I believe was just acted on. And then SB1 resolution that I believe also needs action. If I, I'm trying to make out what Rodney had said, if I understand correctly, he was saying we also need to take action on the SB1, however, it does not require a public hearing.
Correct.
It's not on our agenda, yeah.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Okay.
So SB1, when was that introduced? Mr. Poe, I think you're muted.
It was at the same time, both were submitted.
That was what I used to give y'all, Snowman Poop.
I think, Mr. King, you're unmuted. Attorney King, you're unmuted.
Mr. President, can you?
Who's, Mr. Poe, so what are we doing here? You're saying there's another resolution, there's not, there's no other matter on the agenda for third and final?
Okay, maybe there was miscommunication, both were submitted at the same time. Resolution for, the confirmatory resolution and the SB1, the SB1 was included with the confirmatory resolution.
As a separate resolution with its own number?
I was under the impression it was, I don't have my agenda in front of me, but I think it's not on the agenda, it's not on the agenda.
Madam Clerk, are you aware of another resolution that was submitted in any reading here too far?
I'm not.
We didn't discuss any of that in committee.
Miss, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Are you aware of this resolution?
No, I'm not.
Mr. President?
Ms. Attorney Colvin?
In the past, the form has always just been a part of the document signed with the resolution, the confirmatory resolution, there wasn't anything separate. When the council voted on the resolution, it was voted also at the same time to sign the form.
That's correct.
So really what needs to happen is you just need to sign the form. There doesn't need to be a separate motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so I think council pending ordinances and resolutions on second reading.
CPR 2020-40, an amendment to ordinance 5881, section 2-1074K, regarding the Huron Academy Certified Police Officers in the city of Gary, Indiana, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary, Chief Ryan Evans, Gary Luuspart.
Councilman Williams?
Mr. President, I move for passage of CPR 2020-40 on the second reading with a committee hearing set for 8:25 2020 with a public hearing on 9/1 2020.
What time will that be?
6 o'clock.
Okay, was there a second?
Second.
Given second by Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell, any questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, CPR 2020-40 passes on second reading with a Public Safety Committee meeting on August 25, 2020, at 6 o'clock PM via Zoom and a public hearing on September 1, 2020, also via Zoom.
CPR 2020-12, a resolution of the common council of the city of Gary, Indiana, as it relates to an SS valuation deduction, tax abatement for real property vacant building deduction of Alliance Steel Corporation, as approved by resolution number 3050 pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1 for the purpose of modifying and amending the project development agreement, modifying and amending the original Form SB1-BBD dated November the 2nd, 2020, and granting a waiver of non-compliance as it applies to an untimely late filing of the January the 1st, 2019, Form CF-1-BBD and the Form 322-BBD to the Office of the Lake County, Indiana Auditor, and the submission of said forms to the designated body to report compliance with the original Form SB1-BBD, sponsored by Mayor Jerome Prince, City of Gary, Indiana Redevelopment Commission, and the Indiana Office of Community Investment.
Mr. President.
Councilman Brewer?
I'm going to suspend the rules and pass on all three readings, CPR 2020-12.
That could.
Been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Brown. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
With a vote of eight to zero, we are suspending the rules. We're suspending the rules to passes on all three readings. Will now need to vote on the substance of CPR 2020-12. Councilman Brewer, you're moving for passage on third and final?
Moving for passage on third and final CPR 2020-12.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded by Councilwoman Brown. Any questions or discussion? I would ask for a brief overview. Is Attorney Colvin, are you providing that? Or someone else?
Mr. President, I think we have the petitioner.
Okay.
This is John Westerkamp, I just, I asked for recognition from the.
Yes, thank you, sir.
And I'm sorry, I'm seeing that I look pretty dark, but I hope everybody can hear me. If you can't, let me know. I'm counsel to Alliance Steel. I represent, I mean, they moved to Gary, Indiana, made Gary their new home in 2019. We signed a development agreement with the city of Gary in November of 2018. What's happened is that the assessed value went up double of what was anticipated by both parties. And as most of you know, the abatement is on the increment of the tax, of the taxes. And so this effectively eviscerated the abatement that the client was getting. It wasn't anticipated by Gary, wasn't anticipated by the client. And so what this amendment does, what this resolution does, is to try to fulfill the expectations of both parties so that Alliance Steel enjoys of moving to the city of Gary. And I've spoken with the CFO, they held interviews at the city, at the city building downtown. They're looking to hire people. We had, the CFO had a conversation with someone on the redevelopment commission recently about how to get more Gary residents hired by Alliance Steel. But with the economy being the way it is, with the steel service industry itself being an industry of origins and with the virus, they're struggling right now. So this resolution is significant to my client. And so I just wanted to present that brief overview for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Westerkamp. Any questions or discussion, Mr. Westerkamp, or about this matter? Okay, and just confirming, Mr. Poe, this does not require, I should say, my own attorney, Attorney Williams, this does not require any public comment, given that we're kind of reconsidering a resolution that was already passed? Attorney Williams? Attorney Williams?
I'm here, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
I just wanted to be sure that there was no public comment required, given that we're kind of re, we're doing almost something similar to what we just did. We're just correcting an error.
Yes, you already had appropriate public comment.
Okay, so we don't need any public comment on this?
It's on, again, I couldn't hear for about 30 seconds there, but you're correcting what?
Well, basically, a resolution, and I understand it, CPR 2020-12 is correcting the applicability of, I believe, 2020 to an abatement that was already issued last year, I believe. But it's an error that we're trying to make this year, from my understanding, it made 2020 applicable. I know earlier, Mr. Poe interjected and said that we needed to have public comment for an abatement of this kind. Since we're kind of opening this back up and making it, adding a particular year of applicability, I wanted to confirm whether we still needed to have a public comment.
In my opinion, no, I don't believe there was a substantive change to the amendment. Therefore, again, I used this term before, it's similar to a scribbler's error. You're changing the date of applicability, and I assume that was done by mistake. Therefore, as long as there's no substantive change, it's already been afforded public comment.
Councilman Brewer?
Mr. President, for Attorney Williams, no, it wasn't done by mistake. There was a problem with the assessed valuation, where the assessed valuation was doubled. So the new tenant resident to the city, the benefit that we was trying to give them, we wasn't giving them anything at that time. So we want to make it right now, by that way they can enjoy the full benefit of the tax abatement.
Okay, well, that's a little different than what Councilman Godwin explained to me. In that case, no, I would say that is a substantive change and you would have to open it up for public comment.
All right, that's what I was thinking, because I know there was a question about whether it applied now. I know it applied starting next year, so, okay.
Sorry, I misunderstood, I thought you were saying that was the only change, it's just changing the year of applicability. But no, okay, now that I understand that, yeah, I agree, it should be open for public comment.
All right, thank you. So any, I'll start with council members, any council members that have questions or discussion about CPR 2020-12? Okay, we're now open for public comment, we will keep a strict time on this. Any members of the public wish to speak? Okay, I don't see any member of the public speaking. So I will close public comment at this time. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins?
Yes.
Councilman Brewer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell?
Yes.
Councilman Lay?
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Godwin?
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is eight to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, with a vote of eight to zero, CPR 2020-12 passes on all three readings and is so ordered.
Mr. President, pending ordinances and resolutions on second read.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time we will have our mayor's report and questions of city officials.
Yeah, just trying to get off mute, Mr. Chair, I might.
No problem.
So I have quite a bit to report, as you all know, I've missed the last several meetings and in the interim have at least fielded multiple questions from council members and the public alike. And so to that extent, I'll try to be as brief as possible, but as thorough as possible also, share some recent, I guess, events with you and occasions. As you all know, we certainly opened the beaches last weekend. Didn't have an overabundance, perhaps due to the weather or the fact that people were used to it being closed. But in any event, we certainly did so in a responsible manner with a plan to promote social distancing and prepared to definitely control the traffic flow, which was also a problem out there. Want to talk about something that occurred over at the Department of Sustainability and Environmental Affairs. Myself, along with 200 other mayors, called on the US Senate to include financial assistance to our municipal governments in the US Senate CARES Act plan. Every city, town, county, and town. Um, every city, town, county, and township, uh, in the country has been affected, uh, by climate change and and certainly, uh, different situations that relate to, uh, specifically us, our lakeshore. And and to that extent, uh, I believe that collectively as a group of mayors, we've made some inroads and certainly have garnered the attention of, uh, those persons at the national level. Also want to commend the, uh, Calmont Council for their approval of a of a resolution here recently, um, from, uh, our office on climate resilience and and recovery. Uh, the idea here was to reduce our greenhouse emissions, obviously, in accordance with, uh, goals that were agreed upon by, uh, the U.S. Climate of Mayors. Um, Mr. Chair, there's also a little information out of, uh, Human Resources. I've got a couple notes here, so please bear with me relative to what they're doing over there. Uh, Department of, uh, Commission for Women, actually. Uh, recently, they, um, have been providing safety plans and resources as well as referrals for people, uh, affected by, uh, domestic violence. In addition to that, they teamed up with a group called Little Big Guys Moving Company and were able to clean out, uh, uh, sixteen rooms of broken furniture that had existed in one of our city facilities for quite some time. And so, um, I would say very gladly that, uh, that that particular department, as well as others, have bought into the, uh, the the prospect of of just starting new, reimagining Gary, if you will. And we certainly appreciate all of their efforts, as we do everyone who who participates. Um, last meeting, I guess there were some questions about Clean Slate and and the effectiveness and the cost and that. And I heard some numbers thrown out, uh, and and I'll just simply say that that particular project did not cost, uh, five hundred thousand. I believe the number was more like two hundred thousand. But in order to understand the full impact of it, um, you really have to understand what the purpose of it was. And so Clean Slate, we engaged in, uh, based on my observation, certainly during our transition period, as well as, uh, those of a senior advisor on our staff who had previously worked with them in Illinois. And basically, that particular company provides a service that no other company, uh, certainly that I'm familiar with, certainly not around here, or any that I've, uh, encountered, uh, provide. They, um, work on litter abatement, but more importantly, they are an enhancement to our efforts of, uh, general services, as well as our go team, in ensuring that once a site is cleared in an area that, uh, Clean Slate is assigned to, uh, it's done so in a more manicured fashion. I- it's one thing to go in and 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 chop weeds or or cut trees or or clean sidewalks, but it's another thing to make it presentable and certainly, uh, welcoming for persons who visit our community and who want to, uh, consider utilizing Gary as a place to, uh, conduct business. I- i- it's a very unique program that fits our needs, I believe explicitly. And, uh, they also are a true partner in reimagining Gary. Um, you know, over the last six months or so, we've, uh, engaged with council members, certainly staff as, uh, our interim director of parks, Mr. Reeves, has, uh, uh, interacted with each council member in an effort to identify one particular park in each district that would be designated as a gym park. But in addition to that, we've catalogued all the parks that exist and are attempting to make efforts to at least make them accessible to all the citizens. I I say that to say, Mr. Chair, because, um, you know, coming into, uh, this this term, I I I definitely understood the challenges that existed and that had existed for quite some time. And and we embrace those challenges, but, um, you know, true progress or or enhancements uh, don't happen instantaneously. And I'm just really proud of the fact and the work that, uh, those different persons in those departments have engaged in, uh, because I believe we are making an impact. I- i- it's evident, if I share some of the numbers of the amount of, uh, trash that we've actually pulled out of the, uh, the city within the last, uh, five weeks since we initiated this project. And to date, uh, nine hundred and thirty-six tons of trash and debris. And that certainly didn't capen over the last months and and or the last seven months. And I I mention that to say is that a lot of these conditions that exist have existed for quite some time, and it's our effort to address each and every one of them. But from a realistic perspective, it's something that's going to continuously, uh, take a little bit more time. And equally important, as as Council Weath- Councilman Weatherspoon mentioned earlier, wha- what's really needed is buy-in, uh, not only from the community, but certainly from council members. And, uh, I think this is a situation where everyone has to roll up their sleeves, especially if we want to see the type of progress and the timeframe that we want to. And so, uh, I also spoke with those persons that Councilman, uh, Weatherspoon was speaking about. We had some very spirited, uh, conversation based off of a Facebook post. Uh, you know, because I believe fundamentally that people want to see, uh, better neighborhoods and communities. And I also believe that people want to participate, uh, but they need direction and they certainly need us to do our part. And to that extent, uh, we believe that we're doing just that. Um, I wanted to mention the streets, uh, that the councilman spoke of earlier. I believe he said Sylvian, I'm almost certain you meant Sullivan and and Maple.
Sullivan, um, Oak and Maple, between Oak and Maple.
Yep. Um, so, in any event, um, there are, a- a- and I appreciate the petition that's being circulated, but, uh, th- there's a couple things that we absolutely have to point out. And so I'm familiar with that location as well as the street. Um, as we are familiar with the number of other locations that resemble that and have done so for quite some time. And 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 the point is, is that, uh, paving and infrastructure is something that's going to continue to be challenging in this city. Uh, this year alone, we still, and and it appears that we may not be able to do any substantial paving, largely because of one of the mantras of this administration is to pay our bills. And to that extent, we, uh, started with paying, uh, paving bills that were left from last year. Uh, I I just got a text that said, uh, that a section of Sullivan and Maple had been rebuilt last year. But in any event, uh, any reports that come in, we certainly are cataloging them, and councilmen or councilmen and women. Uh, what we believe a, uh, more effective approach would be is that as we identify the areas that, uh, are the most in need of repair, that perhaps we're able to do just what was texted to me, and that is build sections of the, uh, pavement over again. Um, I could point out a few that you all probably have driven by yourself over, you know, the last decade or so. Uh, Forest and Hemlock, uh, Forty-Fifth Avenue from Broadway to Harrison, where water sits and has set, you know, for quite some time. Uh, the corner of Thirty-seventh and Broadway, uh, forty-four hundred block of Jefferson Street, which is almost an exact replica of the situation that you pointed out, uh, Councilman. And so to that extent, yes, please continue to send the reports in. But also, when you speak with the constituents, uh, there there's a couple options. Uh, we certainly welcome those concerns, so please, uh, invite them to call City Hall directly. Or, uh, some of you, um, have my, or most of you have my my private cell number and know that I'm not opposed to citizens having that, because we enjoy engaging with them and sharing accurate information. And more importantly, giving them accurate expectations as to when, uh, they can expect some improvements there. Lastly, Mr. Chair, for the sake of, uh, time, and I know you guys are probably ready to get on with some other business. I want to revisit, uh, just briefly, the CBA. Uh, I believe Tammy was doing an excellent job in at least, uh, beginning to express the impact that we've had relative to, uh, procurement and compliance. And I think one of the best decisions that we've made, uh, as an administration very early on was to engage her, uh, citywide in the area of compliance. And to that extent, uh, not only is she engaged with it, but she monitors it and sends reports to the administration daily, uh, particularly on the casino project, as well as other projects, and and showing efforts and and accomplishments where we have been able to have some impact on those areas. So if you would indulge us for just a few more moments, I would like for her to share that portion during the mayor's report, because I believe it's relevant. Ms. Davis, if you will, please.
Sure, thank you, uh, Mayor, for this opportunity, um, and President Galloway and council members for allowing this time. Uh, we are very excited on a lot of the progress that we have made in implementing the executive order, requiring the utilization of minority women and veteran-owned businesses. Uh, we have been successful in working with the Indiana Department of Administration, uh, Division of Supplier Diversity to get, uh, minority businesses, uh, certified so that they would be able to be counted on not only the Hard Rock Casino Project, but other projects as well. Uh, some of the things that we have been able to, uh, implement and put in place uh, while we are taking the time to get it right, um, is that the executive order covers purchases, professional services, supplies, and construction. So it's all across the board procurement as to where it is applicable. Uh, we are looking to broaden the bid preferences that are offered to our local and minority vendors. We are taking advantage of what the state of Indiana offers to municipalities and political subdivisions, such as the Gary Sanitary District, to the degree that some projects will be identified for small business set-aside programs, which means we'll be looking at procurements to specifically identify line items whereby local meeting Gary and small businesses would be able to compete for. We're also utilizing the veteran-owned business and the local small business preference that is also offered by the state of Indiana to local municipalities and political subdivisions. We are monitoring change orders to ensure that as vendors are making a request, uh, particularly for an increase, we're monitoring those to ensure that there is not an adverse impact on local minority women and veteran-owned businesses. We're ramping up on the accountability standards. We have already denied contractors from bidding on our projects because of their continuous non-compliance with hiring local residents. We're looking to take that even a step further. So while the city's ordinance and the sanitary district's policy allows for that ten percent bid preference, we will be denying contractors that privilege if they use that preference to get the work, but then in turn don't hire local people. So we are really putting a magnifying lens on how we have been executing compliance in the past and ramping it up with the type of support top-down and horizontally to ensure that we are able to get local people hired and make sure that we are providing the support to our local minority women and veteran-owned, um, businesses. We are looking to create a compliance bond, if you will, uh, that will serve as an incentive and even as a guarantee for vendors to comply. We we see bonds utilized in other areas of construction, but we want to make sure that, uh, that is being applied universally so that vendors come in making a commitment and recognizing that it is a contractual commitment and not just a goal that they may want to aspire to, but that we're making it part of a contractual, um, commitment. And so putting this into, uh, into relevance with the Community Benefits Agreement, um, which I believe we should have some variation of it. But it takes time to get it right, to make sure all of the right players and all the right pieces are in place. One of the things that our city really needs to focus on is increasing our pipeline and developing a pipeline of local talent, not just in the construction trades, but across all industries to not just approach our developers and contractors from a punitive standpoint, but also providing them the support and the resources to even get into compliance. And that is a universal challenge citywide, that while we may find them not in compliance with hiring, we need to be able to direct them somewhere to say, here's a resource for hiring in trades, here's a resource for hiring in steel, et cetera. And so those are some of the progressive things that we are moving towards and executing the ordinance in making sure that it's not just a document, it's not just a policy, but it is something that is going to have real impact that can be realized with our particular procurements. And again, the executive order goes beyond the CBA. It's not just about construction, but we're looking at even the smallest of procurements. And to the degree of holding department heads accountable, we want to make sure that every person who is designated as a procurement authority or a purchasing agent understands that this is a commitment that they have responsibility for executing in their respective departments. So when it comes budget time, around September or October this year, we want to make sure that while they're putting together their budgets and looking at line items, that we are being proactive in identifying those line items that will be able to be procured by our local vendors. We are already seeing an impact of an increase of minority contractors being interested in bidding on our projects. We just need to help them get over the finish line, and that's where the resources come into play that is listed in the executive order. Not only are we working with the state of Indiana, we are working with the Chicago Minority Supplier Development Council, which has jurisdiction over northwest Indiana. We are working with the city of Indianapolis, who has a MBE and WBE certification program. So we are not limiting our resources just locally, but we are looking statewide, turning under every stone to make sure that we are bringing resources to our businesses here in Gary. So we're just not talking about it, we're just not passing paper. We are actually building something that can be sustained in the long run.
Mr. Bakari, I think you're, um, or, please continue, sorry.
Um, as we continue to produce our reports, um, how they say the proof is in the numbers. Right now, we track our construction projects and are able to break down by construction trade who's hiring local, who's hiring minorities, who's hiring females, and soon enough we'll be able to, uh, track veterans as well. But, uh, we have done, uh, some good work in this short amount of time of, uh, implementing the executive order and making it transparent and making it equitable. And as always, I always invite our council people to contact me with businesses in your district that, uh, we can refer to many of our contractors, construction managers, and engineers uh, to ensure that, uh, we're providing resources as well as holding them accountable. And as the mayor said, I as well make myself available via cellphone, email. Uh, during COVID, you may have been able to come down to the plant, but, you know, just send a girl a text or a, uh, email. a girl a text or a email.
All right.
And I will get it and, and respond. So if we take the time to work with our partners, then, then they'll be able to get it right. And I can speak to some conversations that I've had with representatives of Broadway Lofts, of specifically looking to identify opportunities in minority businesses. So when we work with them, we'll be able to get our end goal by working collectively together.
All right. Thank you so much, and we look forward to further discussion in the committee meeting and probably a whole series of meetings as we think about our CBA and the, and the main thrust of the goals behind it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, thank you. Any other questions for the administration, the mayor, or other department heads who are on? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Weatherspoon.
I have one quick announcement to make before we adjourn.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just got the information a little while ago and got it completed, from the Arts History and Culture Committee. The Gary, when announced, the Gary International Black Film Festival is presenting the Gary, Indiana premiere of Nation Time Gary, film that's directed by William Graves. Film itself chronicles the 1972 National Black Political Convention, which was held in Gary. Nation Time Gary is the only film record of this historical event that happened in 1972. I must say, assuming my age, I do remember it, I was a high schooler. The film features, of course, Reverend Jesse Jackson, Dick Gregory, Coretta Sky King, our own Honorable Richard Gordon Hatcher, Betty Shabazz, Maury Baraka. Tickets are available for this event, actually, on our city webpage. If you go to the city webpage and look under News and Events, you will find a link there where you can either see the film via online, or you can attend the film, which is going to be held at our baseball stadium this coming Saturday, August 22nd, at 4:30. So again, I would, you know, highly recommend this, it is a, a historical, or should I say it was a historical event that, of course, led to others leaving the city and going out and running for mayors and governors and things of this nature. It was the beginning of the Black Empowerment movement. So again, I encourage everyone to attend either the baseball field or either watching it online. The event is 100% free.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Williams.
At this time, I'd like to try to make a change to the time for the committee hearing. Is it possible to set it at 5 o'clock instead of 6 o'clock?
That's possible. I just, Attorney Williams, does that require that we?
Yes, that will, that will require a motion and a second.
Okay. So it's been moved to change the Public Safety Committee hearing time to five, from 6:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilwoman Barnes Caldwell. Any questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Atkins.
I think she had some technical issues.
Councilwoman Brewer.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Caldwell.
Yes.
Councilman Lay.
Yes.
Councilman Weatherspoon.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
And President Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. President, the vote is seven yes, zero no's.
Of seven votes in, in the, in for yes, the Public Safety Committee meeting will be at 5:00 p.m. on August 25th, 2020. Any other new business, questions, discussions?
Just want to make sure, Mr. President, that the ordinance CPR 2020-39 is going to the Quebec Committee, and it will be on the 25th at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you.
I'm glad I gave the time.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. President.
Stand adjourned. Good evening.
Evening.